To the City of Riverbanks Planning Commission Meeting, Tuesday, September 19th, 6:00 PM. Call to order.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners.
Staff would like to introduce your new Planning Commissioner, Mr. Scott McRichie. Welcome.
Okay, as we proceed through conflict of interest, any Planning Commission member or staff, huh? What? Oh, sorry, roll call, there we go.
Chair McKinnney.
Here, so far.
Vice Cherokee.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Tabacco.
Here.
Commissioner McRitch.
Here.
Okay. Conflict of interest, any Commissioner, any Commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. So, any conflict of interest with any, okay. Moving forward, item one, public comments, no action to be taken at this time. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person under state law matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purpose, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission. So, any public comments at this time? No, seeing none, moving forward, item number two. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission Board unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commissioner member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of the staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. So, we're looking to approve this. Okay, item one, item 2.1, posting of the agenda. Item 2.2, approval of the agenda, and item 2.3, approval of the minutes, so.
I'd like item 2.3 pulled.
Okay.
Move for approval of item 2.1.
And 2.2.
I'll second.
Chair McRich, or McKinnney?
Yes.
Vice Cherokee.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Tabacco?
Yes.
Yes. On 2.3, the reason I asked to have it pulled is that I wasn't here, so I couldn't vote on it if you voted for all three at one time.
Okay, got it. Alrighty.
Move for approval of item 2.3?
Vice Cherokee.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Tabacco?
Yes.
And Commissioner McRich?
Abstain.
He's abstained. Okay, public hearing presentation, I'll turn that over to staff.
Item 3.1 is general plan amendment number 2017-01. This item was continued from the regular Planning Commission meeting of July 18th, 2017. The project consists of a general plan amendment to the city's land use element to allow for specific plan, land use designations to be established and designated on the general plan map in accordance with specific process and criteria. Resolution number 2017-016. This item will be presented by John Anderson of JB Anderson Land Use Planners.
Thanks Donna, members of the Commission. John Anderson, JB Anderson Land Use Planning out of Ripon, California, here tonight representing the Planning Department as a contract planner, working on this general plan amendment. This item has been presented to the Commission at least on two prior occasions. This is a public hearing item. I believe we have let the public know this would be continued to tonight specifically so that the Commission could, if they choose, render a decision based on the information they've received and the two, one prior Planning Commission hearing, and then, of course, the workshop that we had last month. So, the staff report is pretty much a duplication of what you've seen previously, a little bit of cleanup language. I've got a PowerPoint for you tonight that I can go through. I think there's probably folks in the audience that would like to talk on this, on this topic as well. This is a recommendation off to the City Council, only, only after which you folks render a decision either for or against the proposal as presented by staff. So, again, it's a, it's a proposed general plan amendment. It's to the general plan that was ultimately adopted back in 2008, worked on between 2005 and 2008. It allows for a specific plan land use designation to be established on specific pieces of property based on defined criteria. Traditionally, as the Commission knows, as part of the general plan update effort, you know, every property receives some type of general plan land use designation. A couple of years ago, we went through a kind of a cleanup effort to rezone a number of properties to make them consistent with the general plan designations as assigned, so there was a consistency between those general plan designations and the zoning. This is, this is a proposal to create yet a new general plan designation that will be very specific to only those, those projects that believe that the flexibility allowed by the specific plan, general plan designation would be appropriate for their area and the area as defined by a specific plan, which is what it's discussed as. So, the idea is to cover a comprehensive planning area, it's to be located very specifically according to whatever the master plan is as presented and ultimately approved by the city. So, include a mix of land uses, again, within defined area, and establish land use controls that are very specific to the, to the plan area as presented. So, it's only going to be considered if you meet these certain criterias of which there's one through six, and it doesn't, it wouldn't apply to specific plans that we've already adopted, like, for example, the downtown specific plan, or the specific plan that covers the Riverbank Industrial Complex, or the specific plan that was adopted that allowed the crossroads development to occur, of which about 95 to 98 percent of that plan area is, is finished now. So, it is, it is an amendment to the general plan, and it would require some specific language to be inserted in the land use element. And then, what we've suggested, that there's be, be defined project description and then land use matrix, which established densities and intensities within the defined area. And then, basically, those boundaries then could be flexible within the specific plan as long as they meet these land use matrix goals, objectives, and the goals and objectives of the specific plan that's presented to the, to the city for approval. So, last workshop, we kind of went through kind of the case study, so we can kind of explain what we had in mind. You know, this is a 60 acre site is a case study, 30 acres LDR, which is low density residential, 15 acres of MDR, medium density residential, and 15 acres of community commercial. And then, the developer wants a specific plan covering the area, and then, they would do a general plan amendment to create specific plan designation, you know, embodying these types of land use densities and intensities. So, this would be the matrix that we would expect. Now, the actual boundaries of each one of these designations would be set by the specific plan then itself, but not, not reflected on a general plan map. The general plan map would reflect it as a specific plan designation, and then allows the specific plan then to govern the land uses within it. But, still meeting these overall densities, intensities, you know, talking about the number of acres per type of land use designation, density, number of units anticipated, and population, and so forth. So, here's, there's, under the sample that we've given, this would be a typical GP designation map allocating the 60 acres according to what was presented previously, according to this, this table. And then, and then if, as an alternative, what we could do is using the specific, the specific plan, general plan designation, we would assign, you know, just the SB1, in this case, you know, for this defined area that still has to meet this land use table criteria for density, intensity, anticipated. And, of course, all the design specifications within the specific plan or master plan that are as presented. So, then, at the workshop, we answered a bunch of questions that was raised by the Commission, and I believe we pretty much addressed most, if not all, the issues that were talked about at that time. You may have some more questions tonight, that's great. We're here to answer whatever questions you might have. Future amendments is specific plan amendments reviewed by the Commission and then, you know, ultimately recommended for adjustment by the City Council, because a specific plan, you know, acts as a zone change, so zone change is legislatively approved by ordinance, so that's something that Council would have to act on, once the Planning Commission has made some type of recommendation. Under a specific plan process, the lines between the land uses wouldn't necessarily require a general plan amendment, because, again, you know, the boundaries aren't necessarily defined, the specific plan makes those definitions. So, so it kind of cuts out a step, basically, so it wouldn't require a general, a future general plan amendment if a boundary line were to adjust, you know, one way or the other. Or, or they could create a couple different MDR locations as, in this example, and, and separate the suggested 15 acres into two separate sub areas, depending on kind, some kind of a land plan, that would comply with this matrix and also comply with the land use standards as part of the specific plan. This kind of chart, it's just hard to read, boy, is it hard to read up there. It's kind of outlines the process. The intent of this is just kind of tell you that so requires Planning Commission review, so requires City Council approval, and the only step that's really being cut out is, is a, would be a general plan amendment down the line if they were to adjust land uses within the plan area. One of the issues we deal with anytime we do a general plan amendment is this thing called SB 18, which has to do with tribal, tribal consultation, and it adds time and steps to the process involved with a general plan amendment, not to mention the fact that we're only able to amend the general plan by law up to four, four times per year. So, that's consistent, you know, with state law and applies to all cities and counties. And then, what we're suggesting with this project is that it's, it's more of a policy related issue, so we're saying under a general rule that doesn't require any additional SEQA, that, that the intent was, and the impacts associated with it, you know, will be, will be dealt with on a project by project basis. So, for example, on the Crossroads West specific plan that we're working with now, if they choose to use the specific plan, general, general plan designation, that will be part of their environmental review, and in this case, they're about 50 percent done with a program level EIR to support that project. So, that EIR in and of itself will evaluate all aspects of the project, including this proposed general plan designation, if they choose to go that route. This is simply a acknowledgement of the fact that we started this process with you, the Commission, on July 18th, conducted the public hearing at that time, continued the public hearing to tonight, September 19th, and at the request of the Commission on August 15th, we conducted a workshop on this, on this matter. And then, obviously, the Commission allowed some public testimony during, during that meeting, during the public workshop as well, so there was some, some discussion at that time. So, after having said all that, staff still is recommending approval of the proposed resolution to create a specific plan, general plan designation, and this would be a recommendation that if the Commission feels is appropriate, would be forwarded on to the City Council for a separate action. So, that's, that's my presentation. Are there any questions or comments of what you've heard tonight, or what you've heard the last two Planning Commission meetings regarding this matter?
Pardon, I have a couple of questions. One is, you had said there's just a few changes from the staff report from two, two meetings ago to this staff report. Under location, the original staff support said citywide, now it's as aptable to new specific plan properties only.
Yep.
Was that changed just because, I know you had said this couldn't be done to a area like downtown, which now has a specific plan? Is that what you said?
Right, I mean, the, the intent is for it not to be retroactively applied, so therefore, we clarified that in, in the language itself, that, you know, it's, it's only to be applied to new specific plan designations that are applied. Yeah. That's actually a pretty important point.
Right.
Because, you know, our intent is not to go back retroactively and, you know, apply a specific plan designation to either downtown area or to the Riverbank Industrial Complex.
Okay. And then, the last, or the next question is, you have the list of six that you went over tonight.
Mm-hmm.
It used to be seven.
Mm-hmm.
And one was taken out. Was there a reason for that?
I, I can't remember what that seventh one.
Yeah, it said, "Once a specific plan is adopted, discretionary approvals such as subdivision maps, rezoning, or design review may be granted by the city."
It's just unnecessary.
I'll let, I'll let David Niskin, my associate, address that issue specifically.
Thank you for bringing that up. Again, my name is David, Associate Planner with JB Anderson Planning. That was removed just to, it's an unnecessary step that was put in to the list. Once a specific plan is approved, the natural next step would be the review and approval of subdivision maps. So, it's, it was just kind of an unnecessary bullet point or number list into that discussion there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, no other questions? Do we want to make a recommend, I'm just talking to the... It's, as far as I know, the public hearing is still open on this matter. So, we continue it to this item, this is date specifically. So, take each individual item individually? Yep. Okay. That's good. I'll, I'll go and be here if there's any questions. Okay. Thank you.
So, now, we're going, so this is a public hearing item, so is there any public comments from the floor? Alrighty.
Am I okay? I'm Anna Bell Gammann, Riverbank, California, and I was here for the workshop and also during the August 15th meeting, public hearing, where I think it was discussed that we would continue this for public, more public participation. From the time of August to today, I've been trying to get in touch with some of my colleagues that we had worked with, with a general plan update years ago, and either they're retired or in traveling or out of town. I wrote a letter to Desto B., and they, my computer didn't send it, so that didn't make it either. But, the reason I mention all of that is because I still think that this is a big step. It seems to, not seem big, but it's very big. General plan amendment, I'm not saying that this proposition or this project is not unusual. Usually, specific plans is a bridge, really, between a general plan and a zoning ordinance. But, in this case, I just feel like we are jumping or skipping a step. When there's a land use amendment, where there has been real studies on that whole area, I think specifically, this is because for the, across roads too, west, to accommodate that project coming along. And, I feel, as I stated in the past, that an environmental study is probably appropriate at this time, because I live in Riverbank, and already, traffic is congested. So, when you look at the elements, you have the land use element, you have a circulation element, you have a safety element, and you have a noise element, and those are usually taken in an environmental study. So, I feel that it is a big decision for you guys. I don't envy your position, but as a public member of the community and a citizen of California, I think that we need to take pause and not hurry up for development. I feel like, it's, it's hard to put into words, but I feel like, you know, the tail doesn't wag the dog. The dog wags the tail. And so, you have a general plan that's in place, so I think at least for the public to have a say on the air they breathe, on the noise they'll have to hear. Granted, the specific plan will get to this because of the environmental studies they'll have to go through, but this step, with this amendment, it just makes it easier to pass through. I don't know if I'm making myself clear on that. So, no rush, this is economic, good times, and good for the city, because it gives a lot of economic growth. But, we need to talk about the stakeholders here, and that is us. I don't know how many of you live in Riverbank, I don't know how many of you commute from another city to come to Riverbank, but those of us who live here and are really affected by what's going on with just fast development, it's a bit alarming, and we are responsible for the public, those that serve in commissions and make big decisions like this. And, so I hope that you use your thoughts, and I am really hoping that you will continue this deal as was proposed by Commissioner Stewart and talked about with Commissioner McKinnney and Tabacco, that there's really no reason to rush this tonight, unless you can tell me if there's a reason. Is there something pending right now that we just have to get this through? Is the Council wanting this now? Or is the staff? I would like to hear from the staff, really, how they determined that this is exempt from SEQA. I would like to find out their findings on that. I guess I'm talking to Mr. Anderson. But, Mr. Anderson's not replying.
Voice your, you know, your concerns and your comments at this time. Take an action on them, something we'll be taking later.
So, my question. Okay. So, if I have a question, I cannot have an answer.
And, and answer will be forthcoming.
And I believe in looking at the flow chart that they do have there, that whether you go specific plan or general plan, you still go to SEQA. SEQA is still involved in it, in, in their flow chart that they show, both go through SEQA.
Well, if you amend this tonight, it was put, it will put the specific plan amendment as the rule. I would like, I don't understand how there's going to be land use, you know, on the first level and specific plan. I would like that clarified, because I believe that's not so. And I may be wrong, and I'll be very happy to be wrong. Finally, I know I've spoken to the staff about the minutes from August the 15th. It was a workshop, and I definitely know that there were comments from the public that was not put in the minutes, and there was a lot of discussion. Now, maybe that's okay, and, so I just want to ask for this to come to the public. There has to be a way for the public to read a little bit about it. If you were to read the minutes that you approved tonight, it would feel, it would appear like there was no problem, but there was a problem. We asked for continuance, you agreed on the continuance, so it didn't reflect that. It's probably allowed and probably okay, but I feel then more compelled to make public more aware about what's happening. So, that's all I have to say. It is a big deal.
Okay.
This amendment. And also, by law, I think when you make an amendment, the zoning ordinance is also important. And I think the next item is an ordinance zoning. I just feel like one step at a time. The tail doesn't wag the dog. The dog wags the tail. So, general plan, stick to that. Specific plans are good, but not to amend a general plan to just say, this, you know, the city can come for a specific plan, and all we have to do then is just go through the SEQA process. It really takes away one step, and I just kind of want two steps, just for clear. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I totally agree with everything Mrs. Gammann said.
Evelyn?
Can't hear me? Is that better?
Yeah, we just need the whole unit, this, this...
Your name?
Is that better?
Your name, your rec presentation.
I totally agree with everything that Mrs. Gammann said, and everything, she's totally right on all of it. When you take out the step to, for, to eliminate the amending, the general plan amendment to eliminate that, you also take out opportunity, the opportunity for the public to comment. You decrease the opportunity they have to comment, because you're not going through that step. The one comment, I, question I do have on this is on this item that says it will not affect properties that are currently in a specific plan area. However, for the ammo plant, specific plant, or downtown specific plant, if a developer comes in and wants to develop around that ammo plant, or maybe the cannery area, and they need more property, can they just take that whole specific plan into their development so, and then have it changed? Because my understanding is they can do that, and have us change from specific plan to this, but without, with limiting us because, you know, they no longer amend the general plan to do that. And I'd like to be clear on whether or not they can come in and do that, because they're wanting to make a bigger area, so therefore, the specific plan is now this new specific plan. Now, we're eliminated on what we can say.
Okay, thanks a lot. Okay. Okay. Seeing those comments from the community, except for the next question. Johnny, anything there you'd like to comment on? I guess we can't, no other comments, right? Okay. So we're going to close the public hearing at this time, and open it back up for John Anderson.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Johnny Anderson. Couple different comments that I'll try to address tonight. Annabelle Gannon is raising some issues. A little confused, because what we're doing tonight is the creation of a, of a new zoning, or in this case, a new general plan designation. So it doesn't have a project attached to it specifically. It's another tool, if you will, in the toolbox of planning things, that applicant, any applicant, you know, can choose. So it's not tied to a particular project. So because of that, there's not individual, you know, traffic analysis that has to be done, impacts to neighbors, et cetera. I mean, that's, that's not the point. You know, when a project comes forward suggesting to use this as a tool, they'll have to go through that evaluation, and CEQA is definitely required. Evelyn Halbert asked the question of what happens if the ammo plant wants to expand their growth area, or something, somebody wanted to expand the plan in the downtown area. Certainly, it's possible if someone wanted to come in and develop the Riverbank Industrial Complex. We have a new master developer that comes in, and they say, hey, we want to expand it. They would have to go through a whole process, which is, which would be probably a major amendment to the specific plan for the Riverbank Industrial Complex. Should they choose to use this specific plan designation as a tool, then, you know, it'd be kind of interesting. We'd probably have to do it over the entire adjusted plan area, all of which would have to have new CEQA evaluation, all of which would be presented back to the commission, and ultimately acted upon by the city council. So the steps are exactly the same. You just don't automatically get to use this, this tool without coming to the planning commission, and to the city council, and then, of course, through notice public hearings, not only in the paper, but also noticing of adjacent property owners that would be directly affected by whatever that change might be. So there's, there's a lot of steps involved in here, and it's not by any means automatic, and it's not tied to any one specific project. So I want to make that, you know, very, very clear. We're not attempting to fast-track this. If the, if the commission feels any more time to study and analyze it, by all means, we can continue with it again. You know, it's not, it's not a rush on our behalf. That's, that's for certain. And we're not fast-tracking this general plan amendment, and then following it on the shirt tails with an ordinance adjustment. The ordinance adjustment that's on your agenda tonight is for something entirely different, has nothing at all to do with specific plan, general plan designation we're talking about tonight. So, anyway, I think I addressed the issues that were raised tonight, anyway. If there's any other questions, I'm here.
See any other questions?
Thank you.
All righty. So. It's going to open up, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, why, we're just going to.
Is it okay for?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to talk about a couple of concerns that I have. No matter how many times I've read this, and I have a degree in engineering, and I'm still having trouble, I don't understand what is meant by "in accordance with specific process and criteria." There are some words in there, but it, it doesn't specifically tell me, I, I don't know, I have trouble getting my, my brain around that. Also, what I understand is the applicant will get a list of requirements, but then the applicant, whether it be the owner or the developer, will then put together the design that they present. I don't understand how this improves the process that we currently have, other than by reducing the controls that I feel the city and the planning commission has over the owners and the developers. And so I do have concerns with this.
Okay. I keep caring about this being a tool. I kind of feel that just because there's a new tool in the toolbox, that it's not something that we necessarily need to use. This community worked long and hard to finally form a consensus to get that general plan in place. It seems to be working well. I'm not quite sure that this specific plan use would be a good thing for our town right now.
Well, I, of course, didn't go to the workshop, so I'm a little bit ignorant on the thing. But when I read through all the data that we had for this meeting, I shared some of the same concerns that Ms. Gannon did, just the control and some steps there not, say, being eliminated. I've seen this before, where a developer, when we were doing the crossroads, had some leeway provided that we wouldn't necessarily, would have liked to have had them do. So, but like I say, my, my knowledge of this, not having gone to the workshops and so on, is limited, but those are the things that triggered me, too. I don't have any specific comment.
So, just going to, we have a motion for item 3.1.
What happens if you don't have a motion? What if no one motions to approve it? Just, does it die right here?
You could motion to approve it. You could motion to deny it. And you could also motion to continue for more information, if you so choose.
I will make a motion that at this time, we deny the item 3.1 general amendment number 2017-01.
My second.
And just to clarify, it's a, it's a recommendation. A recommendation to the city council.
Yes.
Thank you.
Who's second?
Joan.
Chair McKinney?
Yes.
Vice.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Tobacco?
Yes.
And Commissioner.
Yes.
And that is a five.
It's a, it's a five zero vote to recommend that the council not move forward on this type of amendment. Correct.
Moving to item 3.2, staff.
Okay. Thank you. This is a zoning ordinance amendment number 2017-01, and this is completely separate from the last item. This ordinance includes addressing state mandates. AB 2299 and SB 1069 focus on accessory dwelling units, which they used to call secondary, second dwelling units. The title has changed now, per the state, to accessory dwelling units. The zoning ordinance also discusses a regulation of skate ramps to address citizens' concerns and complaints. Once we go through this, you know, you can choose to keep this, the regulations in the ordinance, or if you think that skate ramps should be banned in residential area, that would be your prerogative, too. Also, since we had basically the zoning ordinance open for review, staff took the opportunity to address typos, some clarifications, and some housing element and general plan consistencies with other state mandates. Okay. So as I mentioned, the original intent of the zoning ordinance was to amend the code to be compliant with AB 2299 and SB 1069. And since the code had not been comprehensively updated, we also added cleanup to this document. So areas that are being amended are as follows. In the R1 zoning district, there is compliance language in there, and also the inclusion of regulations for skate ramps in personal backyards. There are some changes to the R2 zoning district with AB 22 and 1069. Some of that includes adding some definitions, clarifying some areas, changing the size of what's allowed as far as the size of the second dwell, of the accessory dwelling unit compared to the main dwelling unit. It used to be a percentage, and now they can be up to 1,200 square feet, no matter the size of the original structure. They can be detached now, and cities cannot require that a walkway or passageway be created between the two. It used to be you wouldn't be able to address your parking requirement for the accessory dwelling unit in a setback. Now, the state says that should be permitted as well. So there are various regulations that the state is now requiring that the city have to do. Also, our housing element, there were some programs in the housing element when it was adopted in 2014, that these changes to the zoning code would make us compliant with state housing element law, which includes adding a definition for employee housing, adding transitional and supporting housing to the various zoning districts where they're not allowed right now, under our current code. So addressing the skate ramps, the regulations in there for skate ramps are kind of a compilation of what other cities have done. And they would assist city staff in dealing with code enforcement cases. Particularly, we have one now that's been kind of dragging on for a couple of months, where the property owner built a small skate ramp, and then converted that to a larger skate ramp, and then has music, and has added lights, and doesn't seem to care what time of day it is that they use that, that ramp. And with some of those ramps, which are called half pipes, some of the ledge areas that they land on tend to be six, eight feet tall. Well, when you have six-foot neighborhood fences, that means that they're standing on top of these ramps and looking down into people's backyards, and just, you know, kind of feels like a privacy violation. So these amendments and the, the regulations for the skate ramp that city, or that staff has supplied to you, they are consistent with the general plan in, in the fact that they address housing element goals, like to encourage the development of adequate housing for low, very low, and extremely low housing. They implement a proactive approach to encourage and gain support for multifamily housing. And they also reduce or remove governmental constraints, which kind of streamlines the accessory dwelling unit approval process. The state believes that, you know, more dense housing is better. And so they're trying to encourage the cities, or even in some cases, require the cities to remove restrictions to allow this type of housing to move forward. The proposed accessory dwelling unit amendment is exempt from environmental review pursuant to the statutory exemption section of the CEQA guidelines. And the other amendments, like the skate ramps, are not projects within the meaning of CEQA, because this is an amendment to a code. And so basically, it's paperwork. It's not a project where the city's actually building a skate ramp, or building another type of structure. So the paperwork itself causes no harm to the environment. Staff does recommend that you approve this resolution, to add, delete, and revise the language, so that we can comply with state law, and ensure consistency between the zoning code and our housing element. And then also to regulate the skate ramps in residential districts to give code enforcement something to kind of go by. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So the only thing that's, that it's changing are the things required by law, the state law?
Yes.
And the skate ramp. Nothing else has changed?
Correct. Well, like I said, we, the, the code is kind of a mishmash, where in one sentence, they may have the number one, and then the word two. And so we did go through and put one, and with the number one in parentheses, and two with the two in parentheses, just to try to maintain some sort of consistency. And there were some grammar issues that were corrected. And I think that was, that was about it.
Is it possible to, to separate the skate park issue from, I mean, a lot of these are mandatory, you have to do them, they're state law, right?
Yes.
But the skate park, changing to that, you know, what you're doing there?
Adding language.
Yeah. Changing that, basically, is not have to do it, right? That's something maybe you could consider separately, instead of adding it on to the end of this that has to be done?
Well, no. It's, it's not required to be done by state law. The city's not requiring it. It's not actually changing anything, because there is nothing in the code that regulates these skate ramps. So it's adding language to that section of the code.
Can it be separated? So that the skate park, skate ramp issue is separate from the cleanup of these other?
Yeah. It just doesn't seem like it fits. It's a different, different thing than if I'm on my right pages of what you're trying to do here.
You mean, separate it like two different resolutions?
Yeah. So we could consider this, the change to the skate ramp stuff separate from just approving these things that you have to do by state law?
Sure. I don't see why not.
Right. Because it's all, all seems to be dwelling units, and then we have this skate, skateboard thing off to the side.
So did you want that brought back as a separate item, or you just would like to address them separately, and then come back with the resolution on the skate ramp separately?
I would actually, I, I agree with separating them, but I'd like to see more on the skate park, only for the fact that if I live next to somebody who put in a carousel for their young children, but it goes at all hours and that, then I'd want to have some regulations against that, too. And I read the letter, and then I read what's recommended to change it. And I think there may be more that needs to be in there than is in there, just the hours, the no lights, you know, those, that's a lot of disturbance to neighbors, when you have something like that going on. And, and I think, for me, I think there should be more rules, if possible.
Okay.
And I probably would go the opposite direction. I don't like to see us making more regulation, more regulation. Pretty soon, a kid can't go out and play with a skateboard in the street. So I would like to see, why is there not ordinances that keep people from making noise past 10 o'clock and having bright lights already? Do we need a new ordinance, or don't, those already exist?
We do have a noise ordinance. I don't think we have anything specifically on lighting. I guess one of the problems is, is, you know, when it occurs, if there is actually staff around to be able to come out and to deal with it. And we do have a public hearing component to this as well, so we can take public comment on this. And if you choose to pull that section from the ordinance, I could bring it back at the next meeting, if, if that's what you're wondering.
Okay. Why don't we do something like that? We go ahead and separate, and then bring the other part back? And then go ahead and raise that motion.
So I'd like to make a motion that we separate the.
Oh, should we do public hearing first, or?
Yeah, we.
I don't know. In the process, or just separate it?
I think we should allow some, some.
Public hearing first.
Opportunity for public hearing, yeah.
Okay. So, before we open this up to the floor, I'm going to have to step out. So before we open this, this floor, we're going to be changing the gavel over to the vice chair. Have an emergency duty to do today. So vice chair will be taking over. And I'm going to excuse myself now, okay? And I'm gonna excuse myself now, okay?
Is there anything for me to say? Oh, thanks. Okay, I'll go ahead and open item 3.2 up to the floor for public comment, if anyone would like to comment.
Could I include the skate park, skateboards, skate ramps?
Could you introduce yourself, Evelyn, please?
My name is Evelyn Halbert. Did I ask you the skate ramps? Are you gonna wait for public comment on that next time?
No, for the whole ordinance at this point includes the skate ramps.
Okay. Because I live downtown, I live a little ways from the skate park, which is a little different than having it in your backyard. It's actually worse because you don't get, you only get the noise, you get the boombox radios, you get the lights, you get it all night long because the people that come down there don't follow the rules. The best ordinance we have right now is the noise ordinance because the police department will enforce it. And they will go down there and they will stop it because the noise ordinance is very specific on the decibel limit, on the hours, on all of that. And they will enforce it and they will stop it. That's about the only thing we have to handle at the skate park down here. But if it was me, I would not allow it in the backyard because those things do get very loud.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. If you are gonna, I'm sorry, if you are gonna ban it or do whatever you're gonna do with it, why is it only for the R1 residential and not for the entire residential?
Good question.
It's a good question.
Would anyone else in the public like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. Dennis Thomas on the resident of Riverbank. Hello, everyone. I live next door to the half pipe that was brought this issue to the table. I respect my neighbor's right to utilize his property for his enjoyment, unfortunately the way he chooses to utilize his property is impacting my legally protected right to the peaceful enjoyment of my property. The noise from the skateboard wheels on the wood ramp is disturbing my peace. The ramp was constructed at an elevation above the top of our shared six-foot privacy fence, completely taking away the privacy the fence was intended to provide. Some of you may now be getting the impression I am the grouchy old complaining neighbor. I assure you that is not the case. My wife and I purchased this property August 2009 with the hope of raising our family in a nice peaceful neighborhood. Approximately one year later, Mr. Hoyt, the man that built the half pipe, purchased the home next door. My wife and I were pleased that a married couple raising a family were moving in next door. Very shortly after Mr. Hoyt moved in, began the construction of the first half pipe. This half pipe is not the one that has raised this issue. This structure was erected at a much lower elevation. Also, there are some other incidents I feel that are pertinent and should be mentioned because they illustrate the type of disturbances Mr. Hoyt has brought to the neighborhood. In addition to the noise disturbances from Mr. Hoyt's half pipe skating, Mr. Hoyt dug holes and built mounds for jumping motorcycles and motocross bicycles on the canal bank behind our homes. After seeing 10 to 20 teens using Mr. Hoyt's dirt obstacle horse behind my home and having these teens looking over my fence, I felt it was time to take some action. Instead of calling the police, I made a complaint to MID who responded immediately, bringing out tractors and several pieces of heavy equipment to level Mr. Hoyt's obstacle course. Next, Mr. Hoyt constructed another dirt track, complete with jumps, mounds, and holes across the street from our homes under the power lines on the right-of-way property maintained by Hetch Hetchy. The noise and dust created from Mr. Hoyt's motorcycle on his dirt track became unbearable. We contacted Hetch Hetchy and they responded with tractors and heavy equipment to level Mr. Hoyt's motocross track. Shortly after that, Mr. Hoyt constructed another track on the Hetch Hetchy right-of-way. Again, we made the report and again, Hetch Hetchy had to bring out the heavy equipment to level Mr. Hoyt's motocross track. Next, the construction of the ramps for sale to the public began. There was a constant construction noise, wood sawing, drilling, screwing for Mr. Hoyt. Ramps were being constructed on the street, on the sidewalk, in the backyard. This went on for over a year until we reported Mr. Hoyt to the city for operating a fabrication business in a residential area which City of Riverbank Code Enforcement immediately responded and resolved the issue. Then the old half pipe was deconstructed and the new half pipe, which is now in question, was constructed. Hopefully you are all getting the picture that I am not the grouchy old man next door by now. I feel we have been overly tolerant with Mr. Hoyt's disturbances. I would also like to state that we bought this home not only as a place to reside, but as an investment in our retirement, as I am sure most of us have done. The intention being to sell and downsize once our children have moved on. I have been informed by several real estate agents that the noise and privacy issues from Mr. Hoyt's half pipe will have to be disclosed to any potential buyers and more likely than not will have a negative impact on the value of my home. Not many buyers out there are looking for a residence next door to a Tony Hawk amusement park. Depending on the results of this hearing, litigation to my property value loss will be an option I will be considering. Hopefully the council will understand this is impacting my legally protected right to the peaceful enjoyment of my home. I am not against the extreme sports Mr. Hoyt enjoys. I find the X Games on TV entertaining, but there is a time and place for these activities and I do not believe a residential subdivision is this place. The city has graciously already provided a skate park for the skating enthusiasts and judging from the commercial area the city chose to erect this park, it would appear noise impact was considered in determining the park's location. In the event you disagree with me, there are restrictions I hope you will consider as follows. One, turn Mr. Hoyt's half pipe in a north-to-south direction. There is not a shared fence on the south fence line, therefore no residence to impact on the south line. Time restrictions that will impact adjacent neighbors less. My recommendation is 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM Monday through Saturday, no skating on Sundays to allow residents one day a week of complete relief. And last, utilization of noise reduction construction materials. There are several noise reduction materials on the market and I cannot see why, any reason why these materials shouldn't be utilized. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Any questions for me? Thanks.
Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the, to us, commission.
Well, I was gone for about a week and my sons and a couple of neighbor boys decided they'd build ramps for their skateboards. My two sons are over 50, they're still skateboarding. They were going about 20 miles an hour the other day with those things. I took it down right away. They were using curbs and so on for jumps and the noise was something else. And there may be better skateboards that aren't quite as noisy, but it was bad. In their case too, it was in the street or impacted the streets, so there was a hazard there, a danger. But I, building those kind of things in a, at least in an R1 neighborhood, is completely out of range. And the fact that he may have a side yard that isn't impacting quite as much, I think when you, if you regulate it, you regulate it for everybody. But yeah, I can understand his concern about the noise and we had teenage kids at that time and they make a lot of screaming and yelling and everything else as they crashed and burned and did different things on those things.
Donna, can you answer the question about the R1 versus R2, why you didn't include it in the R2?
Well, I guess, first of all, the complaint was coming from an R1 zoning district. In R2, when you tend to have multiple families on a piece of property or even R3, the yards are somewhat smaller and maybe wouldn't accommodate this type of structure. And I think when you have people in the duplex or people in apartments like triplexes and fourplexes, they understand the noise element and they try, I think, harder to get along because they're sharing a piece of property. But it could be added to those zoning areas as well or, you know, like I mentioned before, should you decide to ban it from backyards? That's also an option that you could do. I would like to point out that the Section F half pipes and similar structures is in the part of the code that requires a conditional use permit. That way, if somebody wanted to build a half pipe, they would have to come before you, the commission, and you could put the type of conditions on it that the neighbors have proposed. So all that thinking kind of went into the development of this language.
Okay, thank you. Did, were we all in agreement that we wanted to separate it out, consider it separately? Kind of have a motion from someone for that?
Okay, I move that we separate out the skateboard regulations from the other.
Okay, I have a second?
Second.
Everybody?
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Yes.
And Commissioner McRicky?
Yes.
So do I need, so since we're gonna separate that, are you gonna bring them back each independently or do we vote on the zoning ordinance thing without the skateboard element?
You may vote on it now with the skateboard separated out.
Okay.
Okay, see if I can get this thing to work here. On page 41, I guess it is, it talks about the lot coverage and it says not to exceed 50%. Then on page, let's see, what is it, 55? It has another reference to that. Come on through. Whoops, got too speedy on me, there we go. Sorry about that, but anyhow, on page 55 it had a better example because in my mind I wondered what the, okay, what the 50% of the...
Okay, those are two separate...
Two separate things?
Two separate things. The one on page 41 is lot coverage and that wasn't changed, that's not to exceed 50% of the entire lot. So you can't cover the entire lot with buildings, only up to 50%. And then the one on 55, it's the accessory building itself cannot cover more than 50% of the required rear yard. So it's two separate things.
Okay, I guess what my question was between one or the other pages is to make sure that 50% of what? In other words, if it's 50% of the whole parcel which already has something on it? And then is it 50%? In other words, it occupy more than 50% of the rear yard, is that 50% of the remaining yard after the regular house is on it? Let me give you an example.
Right. When you look at the lot coverage for the rear yard, the existing house is not included. You're only looking at that rear yard and then...
50% of the rear yard?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Because that was the thing, I wasn't sure, and same thing for the other one where it said 50%. Is it of the whole property, the whole acre, or is it just the remaining, 50% of the remaining?
Okay, so then like the 1,200 square foot allowance for the second building, that really wouldn't hold true if it covered more than 50% of the rear yard?
Correct, correct. The building could be up to 1,200 square feet, but if it would surpass the 50% of the rear yard, they would have to cut back to make that the 50%. And the 50% has to do with stormwater calculations. The state requires that as much, actually all the stormwater as possible be percolated on site. And then the more you cover with buildings or pavement, you have less percolation.
Anything, any other questions? Anyone suggest that we approve zoning ordinance amendment number 2017-01?
I would suggest that you make the motions with the exception of, which section is the skate?
With the exception of, I just had it.
153...
153032F, half pipes and similar structures.
I second it.
Yes.
Commissioner Tabaco?
Yes.
And Commissioner McRicky?
Yes.
Okay, can, let's see, item four.
I have a question. So another ordinance concerning skate parks and similar type things will come before us in the near future?
Correct. The next meeting in October, I will bring you an item specifically on skate ramps in residential rear yards. Would you like me to include R2 and R3 as well?
Not necessarily, just as a question.
And not specifically skate ramps, but other things, thinking about what Mr. Tabaco said also, there are other things besides skate ramps that could cause havoc in a neighborhood, I think. There has to be some sort of an all-encompassing term or explanation that we could use.
Okay, I'll give it that some thought.
I think your R1, go with that. And then if something comes up in R2, then it could be dealt with as case by case because I think the majority of it would be R1 that would be the problem.
Okay, do we have any other, any comments by commissioners? Let's see, county referral correspondence information is none, staff comments? Like to make any comments, staff?
At the time of this agenda, I didn't think I had any, but I will be attending this Saturday through Tuesday, the American Planning Association Conference in Sacramento, so I hope to bring back some good information to share with that. And I might also add that on this Friday, our ordinance that legalizes dispensaries and commercial cultivation and testing facilities for cannabis actually becomes law. It's 30 days since the city council approved that ordinance and there will be some companion items coming with it or next. For example, they chose what zoning districts that these businesses should be located, so you will be seeing parts of the zoning ordinance coming forward to add those uses, those specific uses, to those sections. In addition, there will be items coming forward that will analyze the code enforcement needs of the city in relation to regulating cannabis and also a fee structure for the city council to approve. When all this is set in place, those commercial cannabis operations, like the cultivation and the dispensaries, will require a development agreement to be negotiated with the city and a conditional use permit. The development agreement will regulate the business itself and the CUP will regulate the land, the property where that will be located. So that, those two items will come to you, the planning commission, for approval or denial of the CUP and a recommendation on the development agreement. And then the development agreement will carry forward to the city council for a final yea or nay on that. So you'll be seeing some changes coming forward to the code and in the form of development agreements. And so just kind of wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Thank you very much. So I would just like to make the comment that I appreciate the fact that the community came out and shared their feelings and I hope you don't feel like we didn't address the skateboard issue, just want to give it... the skateboard issue, just want to give it full consideration and not have it attached to something else. So I hope to see you the next time. And with that, we're adjourned.